I wonder when to get out of here.
We're recording.
Okay, I'm gonna call the September 27th Sandusky City Planning Commission meeting order.
Geez, right on time, too.
And if we could have the roll call, please.
Jake Castile?
Here.
Jim Jackson?
Here.
Pete McGory?
Here.
David Miller?
Here.
Steve Pajali?
Here.
Connor Whalen?
Here.
Mike Zuloff?
Here.
Okay, everybody's here. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from August 23rd, 2023. I presume everybody's seen them. Anybody care to make a motion?
Some moved.
That to accept as...
To accept the minutes as presented?
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. Any objection or revisions? Any discussion? All in favor of accepting the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's been passed. Minutes are approved. Next item of agenda, on the agenda, is an adjudication hearing. Brady Sign Company, on behalf of Reverend Monsignor William, has submitted an application for conditional use permit at 410 West Jefferson Street to allow an animated sign. I believe there's... Well, I'll let staff make our, make the presentation and educate us.
Sure thing. Before that, since it is an adjudication hearing, you have to swear in all members that wish to speak.
Including staff.
Including staff and the, and the audience.
Anybody that's, plans to talk about this application, including somebody from Brady, would, we would all, if you would all raise your right hand, and you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Same thing with you. Okay. All right, go ahead and make the presentation.
So 410 West Jefferson Street is zoned PF Public Facilities. The surrounding zoning to the north is RRB Residential Business. To the east is PF Public Facilities and also R2F2 Family Residential. To the south is PF Public Facilities. To the west is Residential Business, LB Local Business, and R2F2 Family Residential. The surrounding uses of this site are residential. The existing use of this site is a school. The proposed use is saying a school. This is currently located at St. Mary's Catholic School's campus. This location has submitted an application for a conditional use permit to replace the existing message board with the digital LED message board. The zoning code currently permits digital signs only with a conditional use permit. The new digital sign will be in the same area as the existing message board inside of the existing masonry structure, and will be approximately three foot by four foot of LED surface area. Based on staff analysis, according to zoning code section 1109.10, staff has concerns that the glare and brightness may negatively impact the surrounding residential properties to the north. Staff suggests only adding images with dark background to minimize projecting light onto these properties. And another suggestion is to set in hours of operation based on the planning commission's analysis on the sign to operate during certain hours of the day. The applicant has stated that the proposed hours of operation of this digital sign will be from dawn to dusk, which is 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. No other departments within the city had any oppositions to this request. Staff is not opposed to the approval of the conditional use permit of 410 West Jefferson Street with the following conditions. That said, all applicable permits are obtained through the building, engineering, and then the Division of Planning, and also any other applicable agency prior to any of this sign's construction. The brightness shall not impose hazard to best pedestrian or vehicular traffic, nor nuisance to surrounding property owners. Sign criteria follows ODOT safety standards for the minimum timing of image display, or 10-second minimum display time per image, whichever is longer. No animations, videos, or illuminations shall have flashing, and that a certificate of appropriateness is obtained by the Landmarks Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. I have a question. Staff, as an adjudication hearing, what sort of notice, whether mailed notices, to people within, what, 300 feet or...
That's correct. So there's mailed letters sent to surrounding property owners within 300 feet of this entire parcel. So I believe there was 99 properties that had a letter sent to them.
Any replies, or phone calls, or comments?
I got zero emails or phone calls regarding this project.
And it appears that nobody is here as, as an adjacent property owner. Brady Sign rep is here.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Zuloff.
So if what I'm reading here is that we're following the convention set by years of precedent by this commission, and, and these, these limitations on the use of the sign are nothing new, and more or less, well, are past practice, right?
That's correct. Staff did just point more attention to the brightness of the sign, and given the fact that it's gonna be pointing towards a residential use, and it's also zone residential.
Right.
So staff was kinda giving more of a notice, and more of a sensitivity to those properties in this specific case.
I have a question.
Any questions for staff?
I have a question for staff through you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, Mr. Miller. Just along those same guidelines with regard to the brightness, is there a way that, that you can say we approve it, but it can't go past this?
So that's a great question.
I don't know, like, I'm sorry, not familiar.
To the chair to Ms. Castile's question. We've had similar questions in our Landmarks Commission on how to moderate and, and restrict brightness and enforce it. Unfortunately, there's not a very strict, there's not any strict language in our zoning code on how to monitor that. So it's gonna be a case-by-case analysis. So in this case, giving us, you know, maximum lumens as an example may not be effective, because there's no way to measure that currently with staff's tools.
Mr. Chairman?
So as far as, I'm sorry, just clarifying. So as far as that kind of condition with regard to the brightness, you just, it's kind of at their discretion, basically.
Exactly.
So just like, please don't be obnoxious with the brightness.
Exactly, yeah.
Because it could present a distraction to the neighbors and stuff.
So that language was taken straight of our zoning code.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, didn't I hear you say something about dawn to dusk hours of operation?
Seven to six.
Like, brightness probably not a huge issue during daylight hours, as St. Mary's agreed to, to cut it off at dusk?
That's correct. So that language was taken from Brady Signs, who's representing the applicant in this case, and that was what was given to staff, was dawn to dusk, or, you know, roughly 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM?
I, I noticed that's not in the conditions for approval written here, and I think that's might be best. I can imagine, dusk seems a little limiting.
Sure.
If there's a basketball game in the wintertime, they might wanna have the sign off, and that's gonna be after dusk.
Yeah.
Sure. And that is the main reason we left that broad. And also, you know, daylight savings, hours may change, daylight may change, so we, we kept that open for interpretation.
Mr. Chairman, oh.
Well, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I'm, I don't know what technology's being employed here, and maybe the applicant can help with this, but we're to the point where it's, you know, it's kinda like your phone. It's completely feasible. I don't know if it's available, or if they're doing it. Sort of an auto dimming, you know. In a bright sunlit day, you need a lot more luminous intensity than you need in, you know, in a moonless night. So, and, and what you need probably depends on the street lighting there, and I'm really not sure that we can count on that being the same forever. Maybe applicant knows, is this sort of some sort of auto attenuating luminosity option here?
Why don't we, why don't we ask the agent to come up?
Oh, sure, yeah. Thank you. It's a good idea.
If you could state your name, please.
Yes, David Mack. I represent Brady Sign, the contractor that is being asked.
I was thinking that's who you were, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah. So to answer the, the question is, one thing that's important to note with this sign is it comes in, it's built in with an automatic dimming function. The technology, obviously, the discussion that we're having right now, it's a, it's an important topic that Watchfire, the manufacturer of the sign, automatically has built in a automatic time sensor. So during the day, naturally, it adjusts the brightness. It adjusts the brightness automatically based on the time of day. So this has an automatic built-in function that's standard with all these displays that they produce, and it's to help the sensitivity to the, the brightness during the different times of the day.
And I have a question, then. Let's say a particular neighbor mentioned about brightness at night, or, or whenever. Is that something that could be finessed and adjusted a little bit to, to be acceptable to everybody at that point?
Yes, there is the option to adjust the, the intensity of the light, I guess you should say, if needed. That's not something that typically we would work with the manufacturer to do that adjustment, but yes, it does have that ability to reduce the brightness.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a question?
Yes.
Would that sign, would it be able to be adjusted after its manufacture, or only during manufacturing? Could you preset it?
It can be adjusted.
It can be adjusted after the fact?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
This, this sign also has technology that it can be, it has a broadband modem that's built in, so it can be adjusted remotely through the factory. So it does have that capability as well.
Mr. Miller, you ate your hand up.
Yes. I was interested in the requirement of the appropriateness certificate from the Landmark Commission. Is that based on the building being on the historic register, or the zoning that it's in, in the downtown district? Or is it based on some other factor, and is that really a push to get that certificate of appropriateness? Is there an issue that, that is anticipated with Landmark Commission about appropriateness of an electronic sign at that building?
Through the chair to Mr. Miller. This building is on the National Register of Historic Places, which would trigger the requirement to have the Landmark review this. Typically, staff has the authority to review administratively signage. Given that this is a digital sign and externally illuminated, excuse me, internally illuminated, it would require board review. We're still, this is kind of a gray area. We haven't had this happen in several years, so we're still discussing with Chairman Alan Griffiths on best way forward, if, if the board needs to meet, or if staff can review it. But either way, they will need a certificate of appropriateness.
Mr. Chairman, oh, sorry.
Yeah, and, and follow up. I just remember when that church down next to Washington Park was putting up theirs, and there was a kerfluffle about whether or not in the zoning of that district, you know, it was like within landmarks to review everything there. But that eventually got through. It seemed like kind of an issue at the time, but, but they prevailed.
Yep. So this is an individually listed property. So we have two districts. We have the Cable District, and also the Downtown Review District, and there are, I can't remember the number off the top of my head, but a significant amount of individually listed properties throughout the city, and this is one of the individual.
That's all I was asking about.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Zuloff?
Yeah, I think Mr. Miller's referring to the application from Grace Episcopal, and doesn't matter, I guess, really why, but they both required the, the landmark approval. And to me, it sort of proves that the process works, because they did change their plan. They were going to replace the historic iron sign completely, and as a result of the process, they may have even saved themselves some money by, by keeping the thing in place, you know. And, and this proves the value of landmark, and that it may not have even occurred to them that this, that this sign had, or that the iron frame had historic value. And, and I'm sure, I have no reason to think that they were bothered by it. It's just that it never, you know, sometimes these things just slip through, and, and this landmark process prevented that from happening, and may have even saved them some money, so.
If I could make the observation, correct me if I'm wrong, we could approve this subject to the condition, the stated conditions, and theoretically, Landmark Commission could say no. I'm not saying they will, but I'm just...
They won't.
So if I recall correctly, Landmarks Commission would have to follow your, your guidance, because I don't believe they can come back and, and go against what you guys as a body legally decided. I do believe they can look at the historic side of it, and if it is appropriate on that building, but as far as the brightness is concerned, that's probably the only piece that they could come back and...
Well, I'm, yes, I'm saying on a, on a different standard.
Yeah.
They could say it's not historically appropriate.
Correct. So they could come back and say it's, it's too bright, or not historically appropriate. But once again, the, the measuring and how to determine that, even through that board, is, is unclear.
Okay. I would make the further observation, as just as I was coming here from my office. I, I looked at almost this exact sign in front of Zion Lutheran Church, which is just, just, now I realize it's on Columbus Avenue, not on more Jefferson Street, but it's only about a half a block away, and a very similar sized sign. Any other questions for the applicant's agent?
I think the applicant is invited, right, to make any further comments in the, in the hearing.
Yeah. Would you like to add anything to what's been presented?
No, just what was stated. Just to reiterate, you know, between us and Watchfire, you have two companies that certainly have the capabilities to make some necess, you know, if there needs to be, or some concerns raised, I think between us and the school, there are the, the options to make adjustments if needed with brightness. I think on top of the, the natural functioning light sensor that automatically adjusts, I think that will help eliminate some of the natural things that may come up, and avoid those things from coming up. So between those, you know, we can definitely accomplish the concern raised about the brightness, if that would come up, but...
I wouldn't, I'm sorry.
I, I think the school wants to be a good neighbor, as they stated in the application, that they want to abide by, you know, dusk to dawn, and certainly, they can do different things to, when they display content, to use different colors if it does come up. With those things, I, I feel like it can be accomplished. The concern raised about the brightness.
The same thing you said. I, I cannot believe that the school system would not wanna be, continue to be a good neighbor. I mean, I'm sure that they, and the other thing I would observe is that with 99 letters going out, there's been no, nobody here to show up to even voice a concern, or ask a question. So we still have the obligation of sorting this out a little bit, but nobody else seems to be too concerned as a neighbor, so. Any other questions or comments? Anybody care to make a motion?
I move we approve, subject to staff conditions.
Second. Oh, it was a contest for second.
Steve.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Maybe we'll call the roll.
Mike Zuloff?
Yes.
Jake Castile?
Yes.
Connor Whalen?
Yes.
Jim Jackson?
Yes.
Steve Pajali?
Yes.
Pete McGory?
Yes.
David Miller?
Yes. Okay.
Oh, no one can accuse us of failing to duly deliberate the question.
I think we've deliberated it to death. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Your time.
Well, we should, too. We should thoroughly deliberate it.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, sure.
I thought that was your point.
It is, yeah. I'm not sure what my point is.
Okay.
As usual, I'm not sure what my point is.
Yeah.
There's nothing further on the agenda other than adjournment. I might ask, did anybody else other than me see an email that came from Dennis Murray?
I, I saw it, too.
Okay.
And I thought part of the discussion, when it came up months ago, for, for what we're talking about, what we're, we're talking about here is Commissioner Murray was concerned about derelict boats, and what we ought to do about it. And I thought part of the discussion was that we have, that maybe we have enough in the code to address that, and that it's really a matter of code enforcement, but maybe not. And if, if, you know, I hate, I hate solving the wrong problem. I hate, you know, passing ordinances when you already got an ordinance. On the other hand, maybe that's what it takes to get some action, and again, the devil's gonna be in the details, but, but I, I do agree that, that we, we need to stamp out decrepitude that's unnecessary in, in this city. We're, we're starting to benefit from some of the things we've done here, and, and, but there are also a number of buildings that have been neglected badly, and sometimes it's sort of harmless, other than you gotta live with it, and sometimes it's, you know, you get bad things happening, like maybe hypothetically, a roof ball blows off and lands on an adjacent condo, for example. So, so a lot of this is code enforcement, but if we need something, maybe we should ask the staff to look at it and, and see what can be done.
I'm wondering if city attorney could come up, see if there's anything on, in the ordinances already, that you pointed out could be used for enforcement.
Yes, so just for the record, Sarah from the Law Department, I will work with staff to make sure we get that question answered. I was not on the email chain that you mentioned, so I will go back and reread that, and make sure I get in all the details, and we'll close the loop on that.
Now, I might make the observation that, let me finish this thought, that there's boats that have sat there for years, but that are still, could, are functional, could be used, that aren't, and one could make the argument, well, I'm just storing it. I pay my, my annual storage fee, and it's a storage facility. Then there's some other boats that are, like, their bottoms pushed in, and they're obviously trash. So I don't know how, how you, that's gonna be applying whatever ordinance there is, whether it's an old one, or an existing one, or a new one.
Sure.
But it's not always clear cut.
Well, we, we already have cars, for example, and you, you, if you got a car that's got plates on it, and it's operable, you don't have to move it. You can park it for 20 years if you want, right?
Current, current plates.
I think you can apply a similar standard to a boat if it's operable, or, you know, or derelict.
Yeah. You said you're gonna look up on, as far as the authority the city has about property owners. Do they actually, can they actually control the maintenance on a home? Is that part of, is that something you're gonna be looking into?
The, the maintenance?
Yeah, right. Whether they need a new roof, need to be painted. How, how are the laws as far as how much power the city has over individuals that own homes, or can, do they have any power whatsoever?
Yeah, yeah, and I'll, I'll absolutely look up those details and get all of that information to staff. Like I said, I wasn't on the original email chain, so this is the first time I am hearing of this issue, so I will make sure I get all of those details.
One more time, before we go too much further here.
I have no idea.
I either missed this email chain, or was not a part of it at all, either. And I was a, a victim of the acoustics in here when you said what Mr. Mur, Commissioner Murray had spoke of.
He was talking about stored boats, particularly, for example, now deep water, he mentioned. And he mentioned another place, the old cup factory. I don't know if that's right next door. I don't know who, what he was referring to there, but there are a couple of facilities around that really do have some, what I would describe as derelict boats. And then there are other ones that, again, could be functional, but nobody's using them.
Is there a proposed way to address this?
I don't know. I don't, I don't remember if he used the word junk or not, but it's completely true that some boats are junk. Okay, so here's the challenge, right? So it's a boatyard. It's a commercial use. If somebody's got a project, and they have even the dream of repairing the boat, and it's not a violation, how do you differentiate that from a big problem that the boatyards have? And that is, someone stops paying. They abandon the boat. They die. They move to Washington State, whatever, and they just walk away from it. Now, the boatyard is going to, is not getting revenue, but at some point, they have, they're gonna incur some costs. They either have to get rid of it, but they can't even do that, because they don't have title to it, so they gotta go to the court.
There is a state, state statute that, it's like a garage owner statute, that you can get...
At some point, yeah, right. But is that, is that to liquidate it, to?
Yes, to get title, and then to do something, you know, then it could be sold, or whether...
But it doesn't happen automatically. You actually have to go to the court.
Is there any proposed legislation about this? I mean, I, I guess I would like to state here on the record that we don't, we're a boating community. I don't think we wanna go to battle with fighting to get boats off of lots. Like, we're like one of the best boating places in the whole world, here in Sandusky. I don't...
I guess I, I've lived here for 45 years, and there's never been a time where I thought to myself, man, this'd be a great place if there weren't so many junky boats around. I mean, it's a boat, it's like the boating capital of the world.
Well, I think, I think you raise a good point. I agree with that, but at the same time, you, you have to be empath, have some empathy for the people who are trying to improve the community, and see, some of them may or may not know the difference between a project, you know, and an abandoned derelict boat, so...
Do we wanna get in the business of policing that?
Well, it's a fair question, but you're asking, it's a sort of a devil's advocate question. I'm just pointing out that there are two sides to this, and maybe it's worthwhile to examine the question.
The only reason I brought it up is this is the second time that Commissioner Murray has broached the subject through, actually, to this group, and, and through the Planning Department. And it sounds to me like he's gonna continue to follow up on this, and I just think it would be good to come up with some kind of, some, I discuss it, some ideas, what options are there. And again, the, the real question is, I mean, some of these marina operators might fully agree that they have a few truly junk boats that they'd like some help with getting rid of, because that, that would open up more storage for them, and make their place look better. It's just, when does it go from a project boat to a junk boat? And that's arguable sometimes.
Well, and we probably shouldn't be examining that, other than, the, the way to move forward is to either write the legislation and propose it, or ask the staff to bring forth the legislation, having listened to our concerns. There have been a couple of other ones that we've just gone nowhere with. I thought we were, we were going to look at, and this, I believe it was Commissioner Murray who brought up the issue of food deserts and requiring food stores to offer healthy options. Other communities have done this, and, you know, not leave people who are dependent upon, upon, I don't wanna pick on dollar stores and gas station food stores with no healthy choices. Now, we talked about it. We can talk it again. We, we either have to direct, you know, ask the staff to go to work on this, or we gotta, or someone here has to propose the legislation. So I think we should do one or the other.
I think the starting point is to see what exists on the statute or the ordinances already, that maybe, I mean, I don't think you can leave junk all over your, your property, whether it's residential or commercial, and maybe a junk boat is junk. I don't know.
Mr. Chairman?
See what we have to begin with, and from there.
Mr. Chair, go ahead. Mr. Miller?
Yeah, and I wish, I, I wish my mind was more intact to have that control of my memory, but it seems that some years ago, and I lost track of how long, it's five or maybe 10, State Representative Steve Arnt, this issue was something that he was bringing forward in the bill, and I don't know if that was maybe codified in an ordinance as it related to Port Clinton, or Ottawa County, which was also in his district at the time, but that would be a great starting point to whatever happened to that bill. Was it enacted or not? It seemed like, much as with the cars, as Mr. Pajali pointed out, it's gotta have a current license to be sitting around. If a boat doesn't have a current registration, I think that's where it kinda slips from being an active project to, to maybe adjudicated as junk.
Mr. Chairman, to move this along, and just, you know, without a motion, you can discuss things forever and never get anywhere. So I would make the motion that we ask the staff to look at this issue, and either come back with legislation that allows the code enforcement to take action on truly derelict boats, or tell us why we don't need such legislation. Now, that's my motion. I tried to choose...
Second?
Okay. So I tried to choose the, my words carefully, so I don't, I'm sure you can get it from the transcript. So, that's all I need to say about it.
Okay. Any discussions? Been moved and seconded?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would just like to mention that I, I think Mr. Miller's correct about Steve Arnt, but that might have been in residential areas. I, I don't know. My question would be, if it's an allowed use, what does, what does it say about storage of boats? I mean... I mean, you may be allowed to store boats, whether or not it's got a license or whatever you need, so that's probably where we should start, but I'll follow Mr. Zuloff's motion. And just to Mr. Whalen, I remember when we did a comprehensive plan some years ago when I was with the City of Sandusky, and there was a commissioner that used to call those boathouses behind Meg Street and Dutch Lane in those areas, Shantytown on the lake. And the consultant came into town and said, oh, this creates so much ambiance for your community, so I guess beauty is in the eye of the beholder.
Mr. Zuloff, did your motion include examining existing ordinances to see how they might apply?
I believe it did, by the following words I said, "Or tell us why we don't need it." And that was intended to tell us how it's already in the ordinance, and they already have the power to take action.
Well, and Mr. Chairman, before we move on, I don't mean to carry on, but I think what the key will be is what constitutes a junk boat.
Exactly.
You know, if it floats, is it junk?
It will take some careful wordsmithing to define that, and you can't, you can't escape some, you can't escape the need for good judgment on the part of the code enforcement staff.
Well, that sounds like selective, open door for selective enforcement.
But that sounds like an excuse not to do anything.
Well, in this case, I will.
The question is how long?
I will vote against the motion currently, because I think, I don't really see the need, I would like to see, be presented with more of a need for it before we spend a lot of time doing it. Maybe I need to catch up on my emails, and I will change my tune next month.
I don't think I was included in the emails, too.
Registration, I think, I think three years is like $100.
Yeah.
I mean, so if all the requirement is, is registration, that's not going to do a lot except for add a little bit to the, a little bit to the state coffers.
Some of these projects are 10-year projects, and they don't want to, you know, get by a valid license to put it in water until it's ready to go.
That's correct.
I, Mr. Chairman, I think there's merit in at least looking at what we have on the books and somebody report back to us, and yeah, let's go, let's go from there, and then maybe in between, we can get a little more information.
I think it's legitimate to acknowledge that there's at least one or two truly junk, derelict, just trash, sitting around.
True.
Maybe those marine operators would like some guidance or assistance in getting rid of those.
Yeah.
There may be some argument about this particular boat. That's not, we don't want that to go.
Through you, Mr., go ahead.
No, I, I had my turn, go ahead.
Okay. I'm just going to say, through you, Mr. Chairman, I just don't want to drag this on a lot longer, but I want to say I agree. I think that just listening to you all speak, first off, what email are we talking about? Can we start there?
The one you and Connor didn't get, apparently.
And, and.
Mr. Miller.
Mr. Miller. So, no, seriously, I'm asking, what was this email in regards?
It was just about derelict boats.
Okay.
And it was, and it was Commissioner Murray, City Commissioner Murray.
Okay.
Saying that I brought this up like six months ago, and it never went anywhere, and I still feel the same way, that we ought to do something about derelict boats.
Okay. So that being said, thank you, that's really all, I just wanted some context. I agree with everyone, but I think like Mr. Pajali said, we should start with what we have in the code with regard to these boats and the marinas, and whether they're derelict or working licenses, registration, where are we now with the legislation? And then maybe revisit once we have that information. That would be my opinion.
That was the point of the motion, is to, you know.
I thought the motion was.
To come back with legislation or tell us why we don't need it. So.
And the legis, come back with legislation is a proposal, but the first, the other part of that is, maybe it's stated backwards, but it's, do we even need anything?
Right.
Is there something on books already that would allow addressing what might be truly a problem in a given situation? If there's nothing there, then the question is, do we go further?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would move that we suspend debate and vote on the issue.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, everybody shaking their head, call motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one question, just a clarifying question through you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, since nobody seconded my motion.
Yeah, it was seconded both.
Well, then there's no, it's not a debatable motion, we have to vote on call, on, vote on voting.
I wasn't.
It was, it was still discussion.
I wanted to ask a clarifying question, so I know how to vote.
Okay, I'll drop my concern here.
Go ahead, Ms. Castile, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just wondered, do we, can we get the information about what exists in the ordinances from staff without a motion? I mean, do we have to have a motion and?
Well, I would just call the motion a request from, this email kind of went out to the Planning Commission, saying, can you guys do anything? And so maybe this is saying, okay, let's.
So you're putting it on paper that you're taking an action? Okay.
Okay, so let's call the roll on the motion.
David Miller?
Yes.
Steve Pajali?
Yes.
Pete McGory?
Yes.
Connor Whalen?
No.
Jim Jackson?
Yes.
Mike Zuloff?
Yes.
Jake Castile?
Yes.
Yeah, motion does pass. I might make it, Mr. Whalen's position, I might say that just because of, even if, whatever we have, we have, and that's just getting some information, and if, even if there's nothing there and somebody came up with proposed legislation, doesn't mean it has to be enacted, depending on what it says.
Right.
And we wouldn't enact it.
I mean, honestly, it's not bad to give information, I'm just kind of stating right here and now that I'm against any sort of discussion or legislation in this area. I do have an old boat, but it is in the water and not derelict currently.
I'm just fooling your level. I too have had old boats, so. All right, anybody care to move for adjournment?
Second.
Okay, all favor, aye.
Aye.
Adjourned. All right.